Um, good morning colleagues. My name is Ronell Lyson and I'm the Alumni Relations Coordinator at the Advancement and Alumni Relations Office. Um, firstly, I'd just like to thank you for accepting our invite to our first net, business networking session. Um, just before we start, I'd like to inform you about a few things. Please take note that this session will be recorded and uploaded to our YouTube page. Please can also ask that mics be muted so the guest speaker is not interrupted. Um, if you do have any questions, please feel free to use the textbook function. Alternatively, you can voice your questions at the end in the Q and A section. Um, there is also an evaluation form. I have posted the link in the text function box. So please um complete that link for us because it's very valuable to us to know uh your opinion and what more we can do and uh what we did right and work on that. Um, so without further ado, please let me welcome our manager of the Advancement and Alumni Relations Office, Mrs. Nishi Govender, who will officially welcome you.
Good morning. Thank you, Ronell. On behalf of the Advancement and Alumni Relations Office, I would like to officially welcome colleagues, students and alumni, as Ronell mentioned, to our very first business networking webinar. I'm so glad you could join us. Um, the business networking web- webinars form part of our alumni engagement activities. And of course, alumni engagement is a level of attraction, connection, affection and influence and alumnus has with their alma mater. So the purpose of these webinars is to create um an engaged and supportive alumni network. An engaged alumni network allows the university and its alumni to benefit from the skills and experience of our D U T alumni. Allow me to extend a very warm welcome to our guest speaker, alumnus and an entrepreneur, Mr. Mfundo Shosi. When approached, Mr. Shosi without hesitation accepted the invitation. Thank you, sir, for that. His presentation will focus on tackling entrepreneurial challenges and solutions and creating innovative and interactive platforms for startups and seasoned businesses. Mr. Shosi is very passionate about what he does and he's very passionate about his alma mater. We were actually very proud to feature him in our autumn twenty seventeen issue of the D U T Connect Alumni Magazine. We thank you for flying the D U T flag high both nationally and internationally. Um, I am certain you will find the session very informative. Please feel free, as Ronell indicated, to post your questions on the chat box or at the end of the presentation. And also, I would encourage you to complete those evaluation uh questions in order to assist us to improve our offering to you as alumni. So once again, thank you very much and I do hope you enjoy the session. Over to you, Ronell.
Thank you, Nishi. Um, just to give you some background about Mr. Mfundu- Mfundo Shosi. He was born in Amlazi and he was raised by a single mother due to the passing of his father when he was only eight years old. Growing up, his dream was to become a professional soccer player. However, his dream was cut, cut short as he was accidentally knocked over by his aunt at the age of nineteen, which resulted in him losing his right leg and dropping out of university. However, he did not allow his circumstances to destroy his future. Instead, he used them to inspire him to become a better person. His personal belief is that in life, when something happens to you, you have two choices. You either allow it to make you better or you let it make you bitter. Mfundu certainly allowed his circumstances to make him better. He is the author of the book titled Dreamcatcher, which was published in Canada and USA, making the one of the youngest South African, sorry, making him one of the youngest African authors to be published overseas at the age of twenty. Mfundo Shosi, the stage is now all yours. Thank you.
Mr. Shosi, you are muted. I'm not too sure um whether you're having any issues or you are speaking, but you are muted.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, awesome. Uh, let me just share my presentation again. Um, so I was saying that um I'm so honored and privileged to be with everyone today um to speak um at D U T, um because I'm so passionate about the institution. And I was saying uh earlier on that all my dreams started at D U T. So I'd like to start off by um sharing my backstory. And it goes like this. So I was taken care of by my mother growing up um because my dad passed away when I was only eight years old. And thereafter, I was taken care of by my single mother and my mother passed away when I was only twelve years old. Right? And thereafter, I was taken care of by my grandmother. So she then played a mother role in my life. And when I was sixteen years old, my grandmother unfortunately passed away. And in that same year, I fell grade nine in high school. And I was then taken care of by my uncle, um who's uh at the bottom left of of this presentation. And basically, my uncle was my hero. He was the person that I looked up to growing up. And he was a father that I never had. But when I was eighteen years old, he passed away. Um, he was shot just side outside our home due to text-related violence which was happening at the time. And what really helped me heal with everything that I was going through at that particular moment in my life was my passion um for playing soccer. I started playing soccer from the age of eight and I was an aspiring soccer player. But at the age of nineteen, I lost my right leg as I was accidentally knocked over by my uncle's wife in our driveway home. And this resulted in me becoming an M P T. I then had to drop out of university um because my recovery process was going to take quite some time. Um, but in twenty twelve, I returned to D U T to start over my public relations diploma. And for the first six months, I was touches on one leg. And during that period, I was spending most of my lunch breaks alone, um because I didn't want to move around a lot on campus. And during that time when I was alone, um sitting outside the for- the second floor, uh the fourth floor, outside the D U T PR department, I had a lot of time to just think about what I wanted to do with my life. And that's when my dream of starting my PR company started. And my PR, my public relations company, Uberway to Communications, I started it with one thousand one hundred and thirty-five and fifty cents at the age of twenty. And then I published my book Dreamcatcher at the age of twenty-two. I then graduated from my public relations diploma with eleven out of seventeen distinctions in twenty fourteen. And in the following year, I completed my degree in public relations in twenty fifteen. Now, I'd like to share the, the, the story about my company. And as I said, I started the company with only one thousand one hundred and thirty-five and fifty cents at the age of twenty, while I was doing my first year at D U T. And when we started the company, we had no funding, we had no experience about business. And we didn't really, really know what we were doing, but we just had this dream um to start our own public relations consultancy. And our company specializes in PR branding and social media services. We help bridge the communication gap between our clients and diverse stakeholders through the implementation of strategic PR branding and social media services. Now, since we started the company, um it, it has been progressively growing throughout the years. And one of the major impacts for, in our business was COVID nineteen. And during this period, before, before COVID happened, we were actually um just started a department in our business as another revenue stream where we were offering social media trainings. Because what we noticed in our industry is that um we would find small businesses who would need our services, but then they couldn't really afford to take on our services on a monthly basis. So we then came up with the idea to offer a social media training. And what we then started doing is we started having um free events where I would invite people to come and attend our free events and give them an education about social media and PR. Um, and then would upsell them on our social media trainings. So because of the impacts of COVID nineteen on our business, we had to stop doing live events and live trainings. Um, we had to pivot the business because we couldn't do that, the live trainings and events anymore. And this was negatively affecting our, our revenue stream in terms of the consultation part of the business. So as part of our turnaround strategy, what we started doing is we started hosting free webinars on Zoom and, and doing our live trainings um for our social media course using Zoom. So in order to attract new clients for our social media management's part of the business, we offered clients a thirty-day free trial of our services um as part, as part of our client acquisition strategy. Now, what we also did is that throughout the years, we've been building a database of our clients and prospects um using email marketing software. So what we started doing from um July last year is we started adding value to our email list. Um, and then we started upselling them on, on our other products and services, such as our branding services and our social media coaching as well. And that allowed us to open up a new revenue stream within the business. Um, the other thing that we did as part of our client's acquisition strategy is that um we, we put together a, an ebook which is titled The Power of Social Media: How to Get Dozens of Leads and Sales Online. Um, and we were giving away this free ebook as part of our sales final, um as part of, as part of the first part of our sales final. Um, because one of the most important things that we've learned throughout the years is that in order to attract clients, we first have to show them how great we are at what we do. We have to share our success stories. We have to share what we do, how we do it um in order to position ourselves as an authority and expert at what we do. So that has allowed us to actually gain credibility within the industry. Now, as I also have, yes. Sorry, is someone speaking?
No, no, no. Please proceed, Mr. Shosi. Apologies about that. We can just request our participants and, and other guests to please keep their microphones on mute uh during the presentation. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So I also have a coaching company um and my, my coaching company and Uberway to Communications joined forces and we created an online course platform called Destined for Greatness University, which is basically an online platform for, for professionals where we offered them a, a variety of courses. And when they sign up for the, a, a course, they get lifetime online access to it. We also offer them workbooks and they become part of our community. And one of the courses that we actually did is our social media course, right? Because what we, what we noticed is that on Zoom, we were basically doing the same thing every week where we were doing the live trainings. And these live trainings were one, a full one-day training and we're taking a lot of my time. So what we did with, with my team is that um we took those trainings, we got feedback from our clients and we improved them in a way that we allowed, uh it allowed us to actually have an online course that is available twenty-four seven and I don't have to be on the platform um in order to, to deliver the trainings. So we recorded it once off and we uploaded it on our online, online course platform. And then this allows us to actually have a revenue stream that's, that allows us to attract clients twenty-four seven. Uh, and we have systems and processes in place in order to uh to make sure that it's a continuous revenue stream for the business. Now, the second part of my presentation, I'd like to share important business lessons that I've learned throughout the years in business, um which I think would add value to everyone um who's part of this webinar. Now, one of the most important things that I've learned is as an entrepreneur is the importance of understanding your vision for your business in terms of why do you wanna get into business and why you do what you do. And for me, I, I, I later on realized that the reason why I wanted to start my PR company in par- in particular is because when I came back to D U T, one of the things that stressed me the most was that the fact that I was disabled and I was young. And I noticed that in my industry, I mean, public relations, I'm getting, getting a, a full-time job and proved to be one of the major challenges for, for graduates. So one of the main reasons why I wanted to start my company was to create um a company that would offer job opportunities for young people in the country and also to help small businesses um grow and thus contribute towards um youth uh employment and contributing towards the economy of the country. So my vision for my company is very clear. And the people who work with me understand my vision. And most importantly, they understand their role in helping us fulfill that vision. So with my strategic partners um and everyone that I work with, my clients as well, uh I make sure that everyone understands the vision of what we're trying to do and they understand their role i- in terms of fulfilling that vision. So whenever you're starting a business, it's very important to firstly identify um your why and your vision for why you wanna build your company and to also share that vision with the people who work with you um and also with the ex- external stakeholders as well. Then the second thing that is um very important is to really know your target markets. And what I mean by this is to know their age group, is to know their location in terms of your target market, in terms of where they live and to also understand what problem do they have and what are, what are their pain points and also what are their goals and desires. Now, the reason why um I always like stressing this part of, this part is because a lot of the time as entrepreneurs, when we first start off, we build a product or a service based on what we think our customers need, needs and not on what they say they need. So it's always important to understand what challenges and problems your customers have and how your products or service can be a solution to their problems. And to always have a con- that conversation um with your prospects and customers and to really find out what challenges they're having and to really understand what are their goals and their desires, right? In terms of what do, what do they want to accomplish in their business. Because then, when you have that conversation with them, especially when you're selling your products and service to them, when you ask questions, you, you get to understand the needs of the prospect and the client. And then you are able to say to them that your product and service can help them um get to the, the end goal. So it's always important to understand um your client's main objective. Then the next thing is to know your products or services, right? In terms of what is the product that you sell and what does it do? What are the benefits of the products? And one of the things that I've learned throughout the years is that it's very important when you're selling a product or a service is that you highlight the benefits of your products and service and not the features. Because most of the time, the features confuse people and a confused mind doesn't buy and doesn't invest. So when you're selling your products, you, you should always focus on the benefits. Now, the benefit is the end result of what your product or service can help your clients or prospects achieve. Then the next thing is what is your unique selling proposition, right? In terms of your, your overall business and your products and service, in terms of what makes you different in the marketplace. And by highlighting that, it differentiates you from your competition as well. And I always say to, to people that in order to win in business, you must provide solutions to people's problems. Um, because as entrepreneurs, we get paid based on solving problems. And the bigger the problem that we solve, the higher um the value we, we are in the marketplace and the more we get paid for solving those problems. And I always say to entrepreneurs as well that the success of your business is purely based on how you treat your clients or customers. And what I've noticed uh over the years is that in our country, um customer service and, and, and customer satisfaction is, is not so great. Um, especially um if you look at um online reviews of what people have to say about most companies. Um, it's because most companies and businesses tend to focus more on profits and how much money they can make and not the value uh that they can add in the marketplace in terms of how they help their customers or clients solve their problems and add value to them. So when you're building your business, it's customer first, right? The focus should always be on your customers and clients. And this is one of the most important lessons that I've learned as an entrepreneur because when we first got started, um we always focused on how much we could make um from the clients and as a result, we ended up losing a couple of clients. Um, it's only when I'm through coaching that I realized that in business, the most important thing is, is, is your clients or your customer. And if you take care of your clients and customers, they will take care of your business and they will take care of your profits. And the added value of that as, as well is that they'll become loyal to you and they'll become your brand ambassadors as well. Then the next thing, um the next lesson that I, I like, I'd like to share with you is um the importance of strategic planning. Now, the first part of strategic planning that we've learned to do over the years is uh is what I call the three key Ps of business, which is people, process and product. And this can either contribute positively or negatively to the growth of your business. Now, the first part of it, which is people. Now, the people, this um consists of people who are your customers or, or your clients, your stakeholders or shareholders or your external public, um your, the people that you do joint ventures with and your suppliers as well. Now, what's important with your people is to make sure that they understand your vision, like I said earlier, and most importantly, to continuously have conversations with them to understand what are their challenges, what are their problems and whether they're happy with your products and service and how they can help you improve your products and your service. The second part of it is the process. And as entrepreneurs, one of the most important things to always um be aware of is that when you build a business, your job is to work on your business and not in your business. And this is so important because when I first got started, one of the things that I was always afraid of doing is, is, is hiring people. So I was always doing everything in the business, working in the business. And as a, and as a result, this negatively affected the growth of the business. Now, when we speak about systems and processes, um i- this is about documenting how you do things in your business. So whether you are solo entrepreneur or you have a team, it's very important to step by step every single thing that happens in your business. How you get clients, how you service the clients, how you talk with people on the phone, um how you, how you do things. So if you look at some of the big brands, especially franchises, um they have a system and process for how they do things. So when you buy a franchise, you buy their systems and processes. So as an entrepreneur, one of the most important things is to make sure that when people come into your business, they know what they need to do, how they should do it and what steps they should take when they, they encounter challenges and problems. So what this will do is it will allow you to work on your business and not in your business. Then the last part of it is uh is about your product or service. And your job is to always look at how you can improve your products and service. And one of the ways you can do this is by getting feedback from the clients and customers and by finding out what challenges or problems they're having with your products and service. Um, what are, what makes them happy about it and what doesn't make them happy and what do they think um needs improving. And by following these, these steps, uh it will contribute positive towards um the growth of your business. Because the reason why, for example, in our business, we started offering a social media course uh is because we, we started getting inquiries from our clients and who wanted to know how they can do social media themselves and how they can implement it for the other, other businesses as well. And that's how we started teaching, teaching the social media course. And that has led us to having a, an online course. Then the next thing is to always ask yourself these key questions. And the first question is, what are we currently doing in this business? Now, this is very important because you need to, um whether it's on a daily basis or on a weekly basis, to really measure your key performance areas and understand what you, what are you currently doing in your business in terms of what are you doing right and what are you doing wrong and always evaluate how can you make it better? How can you improve the way that you service your clients and your customers? How can you improve your products? How can you improve the way that you sell your products and services? Then how can we be ahead? And for me, this is always about looking at um your industry and looking at the competition in terms of what they are doing and looking at how can you be ahead? How can you make things better? How can you innovate? And then ask yourself the question, how can I work on my business and not in it? Because when you work in your business, you won't have the time to improve your, your products and service and to engage with your clients and customers because basically you'll be running around and like a headless chicken doing everything in your business. So it's very important to look at how can you work on your business. Then the next thing I'd like to share with you is our top five strategic planning tips. Now, the first one is to pay attention to the details. And what, what I mean by this is that it's, you should always have, have your finger on the pulse and really pay attention to everything that happens in your business and to always um have that conversation with your clients and prospects and to continuously engage with them. Then the next thing is to know your top five competitors and to really study them, to find out who are their customers and how are they doing things and what makes them unique. And to then look at your business and say, how can you be better than them? How can you innovate? Because one of the most important things in business is to really understand your competition and to really understand how you are different from them. Then the next thing is to know your numbers. And this is so important um because when you're running a business, sometimes you can forget about the numbers and focus on other things, but the most important thing is to, is to know your numbers. Then you ask yourself, how can we disrupt the market? And this is all about innovation and, and, and creativity. Then number five is to automate your business so that it can run without you. And that's how you actually work on your business and not in it. Now, I always say to entrepreneurs as well that how you package your product determines its value. Um, packaging is, is so important in business because of the perceived value. Um, if you want to charge a premium price, your product should look like a premium product. And a lot of entrepreneurs always underestimate the power of branding and storytelling as well. And the way that you increase um the value of your product and your overall business is by sharing your story, your company's story in terms of how you got started and why you do what you do. And that's one of the most important things in business is, is if you just think about some of the biggest companies in the world, um without mentioning them, um you'll realize that we, we create an emotional connection with those brands because of their stories, because of how they got started. And stories sell, right? And before I, I close off this um presentation, I would just like to say that when you're building a business, one of the most important things is to have systems and processes in place. And most importantly, to make sure that you continuously evaluate your business and to really have a plan in terms of where you see yourself in the next six months, twelve months and in the future and things that you need to do in order to move from where you are to where you want to be. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shosi. Um, I know that I have learned so much from your presentation today. We, we can not only use it in uh, in a business sense, but I also think in our, our own lives um and, and the, the, the departments that we work for. There were very vital um key points that you made, you know, about uh the customer and the packaging and how you treat people um and the emotional connection that we have, which will ultimately be success for a, a company of sorts. Um, is there any questions for Mr. Shosi? Or any comments that anybody wants to make? Or has Mr. Shosi covered everything? Yes, Tobalani. Please unmute and you can um.
Um, thank you, Ronell, and thank you, Mr. Shosi, for this inspiring presentation. Uh, my question is basically based on the article that I read this morning. I just read an article about the owner of Trip, who has actually been taken to court because when he was starting up his company, basically did not have any funding. So he relied on somebody. So he relied on somebody else to start the funding. So in terms of protecting yourself as you are starting a business, what are some tips and strategies that you can give younger people? Thank you.
Okay, um that is a very important question. And it it's a very um it's a very important business lesson. Well, I I also read that article. Um when you start a business, especially when you have partners, it's very important to have um contracts with those partners. Um and in terms of their role in the business, your role in the business and how how those two combine. Um and especially if you also have investors, um everything should be on paper. Um so it's very important when you have a start starting a business and getting partners and strategic partners involved to always have um contracts that stipulates the terms and conditions of those agreements. Um that's that has also been one of the biggest life business lessons that we've learned over the years as well. Is not having contacts and having poor contacts as well. Uh and that negatively affects your business. So whenever we get into joint ventures or strategic partnerships, we always um have agreements first. Um before before we start working with even clients, um we always make sure that we have those agreements in place beforehand. So when you when you're starting a business, you should always have those um partnership contracts in place. And to always protect yourself and always make sure that your interests and the people that you work with have your best interest at heart as well. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Mister Ngobane, a question from you.
Uh thank you very much, Mister Shozie, for that wonderful presentation. Um it's very, very good uh to hear uh from you uh after a while. And I just have a question for, you know, and I think many people might go through this. I'm sure uh there have been times when um yes, you might have a vision, but there have been times probably when you have maybe doubted yourself or felt that you might uh not might not be on the right path and might have felt like giving up and so on. How do you keep yourself consistently motivated? Because you've been on this journey now for quite some time and your business is growing. So how do you en- ensure that you 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 remain motivated and stay on the path? Because growing a business um is requires consistent hard work. So how do you keep yourself motivated and on the path? Thank you.
Oh, um that's a very good question, sir. Thank you very much. Um for me, I have I have mentors and business coaches. Um so I have mentors who who who've been mentoring me for 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 since I started my business. And I also have business coaches as well. So every single month, I have coaching sessions with my mentors and coaches. So where we evaluate my the business and we evaluate where we are and where we want to be. And basically, my my business mentors and coaches, um so they they hold me accountable for what I want to accomplish. And when I have a challenge or a problem, um I I I bounce ideas of them of them and I I speak um continuously with them. And how I update motivated throughout the years is that um uh when we just speak honestly, businesses are very is very challenging. So there are always ups and downs. And for me, I always remind myself why I got started. Um I remember I always remind myself of my purpose and and where I want to go with my business. And throughout the challenges and and tribulations that come with being an entrepreneur, for me, I always focus on where I want to be and I look at everything as a as a lesson. Because in business, you learn through failure and challenges. And the more you fail, the more you learn about what not to do. And and that allows you to keep improving. And one of the most important lessons that my business coaches have taught me is that um so when you when you start a business, you have to be psychologically prepared for the challenges and struggles because it's one of the hardest things you'll ever do in your life. But also, if you keep uh going at it and you focus on where you want to be and you don't get emotional. And that's one of the most important things is emotional intelligence. Um by not taking things personally and and always having your focus on your end goal and learning from each failure and just keep looking at improving all the time. I think that answers the question, sir.
Thank you very much.
Uh Mister Simon and Laura, you have a question for Mister Shozie.
Uh thank you so much, Mfunda brother.
Yes, sir.
I I thoroughly enjoyed your presentation. I have a couple of questions here. Um number one, how do you attract the right employees? That is the most challenging thing. Um I also run businesses and it it is always difficult to find the right people. The right people, meaning who have the skill, who has, you know, the passion for the business, who don't only want to gain salary here, but who also wants to be part of the history. Wha- what are the things that we need to look for as, you know, as employers, you know, to to attract those people? Uh the second question, if I may, um is around branding. What are the things that I need to put in place if I want my brand to be perceived as a premium brand? Uh you spoke about you spoke you you spoke about premium brands and you 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 made mention of, you know, that that how they portray themselves or how, you know, they 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 make people to 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 perceive them, uh you know, and they're telling their story. Is that enough? Or maybe there's more that one has to do behind the scene so that his or her brand become a premium brand? Um and lastly, the funding has been one of the most challenging things in many startup startup businesses. Um wha- what would you say to someone who's still starting and they are still finding finding it difficult to find, you know, funding for their businesses? Thank you.
Okay, okay, Simon. Uh thank you for those um for those questions. Um the first one was how to attract the right employees. Um yeah, that is that is always one of the biggest challenges um when you when you when you're running a business, especially when it comes to hiring. Um when you're starting off, you're always going to get get it wrong a couple of times. But what we've learned throughout the years is we have to firstly um identify the type of person that we're looking for. And what what is the role that we want them to to fill in the business? Then thereafter, when we're interviewing people, we try to understand whether um they form part of of our vision for the company and the and their personality as well. So we always try to find A players. And because in business, you have A players, B players and C players. Um and you can always convert a B player into an A player. Now, an A player is someone who 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 would fight tooth and nail for you for your company. Um and a C player is someone who just comes to the company um just to work and get paid. So it's always good to try and understand the person's vision as well, um and and where they want to be in the future. But most importantly, um when you hire people in your business, it's your responsibility um to train them, um consistently train them on you using your systems and processes in terms of their role in the business. So you continuously have to train them and upskill them. Um whether you do that weekly or daily, uh it it it's your choice. But what 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 we've lo- learnt throughout the years is is training your staff is important and role playing with them as well. Uh when it comes to branding, um you create a premium brand using, um so you need to understand your industry, what type what type of colors are relating are related to your industry, the type of fonts that you use, and the consistency in terms of your art your artwork and the quality of how you package your products and how you do your storytelling. Um because quality, um attracts the right type of clients and it also allows you to position your your company um in the right way. So if you look at how big brands do their branding, in terms of the 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 look and feel of their logo, um the the design, and you look at other brands as well and you compare, um premium brands do everything with with quality and they never compromise on the standards. Um when it comes to the funding part of it, um um we don't have any experience in terms of generating funding uh because we've never actually got funding. Uh but what I can say is that when you're starting a business, one of the most important things is to make sure that your financials, you you do continuously do your financials. And you can always look for angel investors. Um but when you're starting off a business, you you the most important thing is is um is to just work and 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 put in the work. Uh and then later on, you can always um look for funding. And what funders look for is they look at your company history and the consistency with your financials uh and with your vision for your company as well. I hope that that answers your question, Simon.
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
Awesome.
Uh thank you so much, Simon, for that question. Is anybody else who has any questions for Mister Shozie? Um yes, Mrs. Govender.
Thank you, Ronel. Thank you, Mister Shozie, for a very interesting and insightful presentation. Um I just wanted to find out, you know, many people, um they might be linked to Miss Ngobane's question as well. A lot of people will want to know, with the investments they've made and the loans that they've taken, when does the money start coming in? So, you know, what sort of patience and determination would one need and in terms of being steadfast before they can see any sort of returns in their business? Thank you.
Um that that that's a very good question. Um it it takes it takes time to build a business in terms of making it sustainable and profitable and consistent. Um for us, it's taken us over six years. And what you really have to understand is that when you start a business, um if you're doing it for the money, um you're going to be very frustrated. Um it's 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 gonna frustrate you if you're just doing it purely for the money. But everything, what we've learned throughout the years is you need to have systems and processes in place. Um in terms of, because for example, even though we are a P R company, um I've he- I've had to learn about digital marketing, about sales and marketing. And by creating systems in terms of how we do our our marketing and how we generate leads. So if you need to have systems and processes in terms of your client acquisition strategy. So that's one of the most important things. Is to have a client acquisition strategy in terms of how you attract your clients and having so that you have templates in terms of how you sell to them. And you have to continuously work on your selling. And because in business, that's the most important thing is is selling. Uh if you can't sell in business, you can't make money. I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mister Shozie.
Thank you.
Um thank you, Mrs. Govender. Um does anybody else have any questions for Mister Shozie? Mister Ngobane.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ronel. Um Mister Shozie, uh we know that um the rate of business failures or or ventures, the, you know, small businesses especially. It you know, the the rate is so high when it comes to the failure of businesses. Many people want to start businesses, they start them, but the rate is high of failure. Um you know, over and above what you've already shared with us, which is really great. I mean, is is there anything else that you could say um to 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 aspiring entrepreneurs uh with regards to um uh resilience? Because I think it, you know, the 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 issue of um of of business success also relates to resilience is what would you say to especially young aspiring entrepreneurs who who are thinking about starting a business? Um you know, to say, so that they can ensure, I mean, you've talked about, you know, over the past six years, um you know, you've had to be consistent and steady and and it's taken a while before you've reached a point where you can actually start earning money. So so what would you say to young people, especially young aspiring entrepreneurs in terms of uh staying the course um and in addressing this high failure rate of 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 businesses? Yeah, thanks.
Uh that's a very good question, sir. Um what for me, uh one of the reasons why um so many businesses fail is because um the entrepreneurs, when they start their business, it's either it's either there's no need in the market for the product or service that they they're offering or because of poor systems and processes within um the business. So basically, what I mean by that is that they just wing it, right? So they wake up in the morning, um today, maybe they they start, maybe they're going to sell or maybe they don't. And they don't have those conversations with their clients and customers to find out whether they're happy with their products or service. So one of the most important things when you're getting started is to underst- to 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 really, really understand your your market in terms of how how big is the market, what is the size of the market? Um what is the gap in that market? Um what is your niche markets in terms of what do people need? Um because business is all about providing solutions to people's problems. So if your your product or service doesn't address a sp- a particular need, then obviously you're going to fail. And the other reason for failure is because when the entrepreneur starts the business, they 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 become comfortable. And we've learned that when you become comfortable in your business and you don't look to continuously improve and innovate, um then you you it's very easy to end up going out of business. But you build that resilience by also having mentors and coaches and not having a an ego, an ego. Um because when I got started, for me, the most important thing um that I'd like to stress is having mentors and coaches. Um especially people who've already walked the journey that you want to walk, to we want to and where you want to be. Um because having mentors and coaches um actually minimizes your mistakes and it allows you to maximize your potential. Um so for me, everything that I I I've shared today and everything that I've done, uh is because of having mentors and coaches. Um so without them, I don't think I I would I would have done anything in business. So that's one of the most important things. Is to have mentors and coaches and to most importantly, listen to them. Um and and listen to people who who've who've already achieved the results that you want and just be humble um and not have and not have an ego, basically. I hope that answers your question, sir.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, Mfunda. Thanks.
Thank you, Mister Ngobane. Uh do we have any other questions? Uh just a reminder, uh colleagues, to complete the evaluation form. The link is in the text box. Um your your um evaluation is very important to us, for us to progress and to ensure that we are giving you the kind of topics that you would like to listen to uh and so forth. So please complete the evaluation forms for us. Um if there is no more questions, I'd just like to pass um on to Mister Ngobane, who is the Director of the Advancement and Alumni Relations. Okay, I see a hand up. Uh Kemo Leifert, you can voice your question.
Hi, um good morning, everyone. Um sorry, so um I'd just like to find out, um how how do you um wh- wh- where do you look for 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 mentors, if if you know what I mean? Like, uh how do you approach someone and 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 tell and ask them that, you know, um I'd like um for you to be my mentor or help me out or or something like that. Because sometimes people are just too too busy or so or something, you know, or you just don't wanna disturb or something, if you if you understand what I mean.
Yeah, no, I I I totally get you. Um so when we when we when we when we got started, um I used to attend a lot of business seminars um in the beginning. And that's when I I I've met most of of my mentors. And the other thing that I did is um I was actually part of a a business incubation and that gave me access to other mentors as well. So I approached them by just saying, by just telling them who I am, what I do and where I want to be. And one one of the things that have worked for me when approaching mentors is is just sharing that passion I have and showing them how serious I am about what I want to do and having the persistence as well. So sometimes when you approach someone the first time, uh they just say no. Um but if you really want that person to be your mentor, you have to be persistent. Um that has worked for me in terms of being persistent. Um and the final thing that I I I forgot to share is how we actually got clients in the beginning. Because when you get started as a young entrepreneur, um it's very hard to be taken seriously in the industry. Um so getting clients is very is very difficult, especially when you don't have a track record. So what we did is um we identified our potential clients and from there, we looked at what they were doing, what they weren't doing, and how our product or service could add value to them. And we offered our services to them for free. Um so we offered a lot of free trials in the beginning. Some took them, some didn't. Um but the ones who took on our free trials, um we serviced them, we gave them everything. And we 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 underpromised and we overdelivered and we then used them as testimonials. Some of them, we started working with. Some of them, we started working with them and they started paying us, some didn't. Um but we then created um a check record for the work that we did with them. And then we use that when approaching potential clients. Because um one of the challenges was where people asked us, who, who's your clients? Who are you working with? And we didn't have a check record. Um so by doing that, offering free trials and working for free, um that helped us gain credibility. And we leveraged the free work that we did to acquire new clients.
Very insightful. Thank you very much, sir.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Molefe. I hope that answered your question. Um if there are no more questions. I, I can see that it is five to eleven, so we've only got five minutes left. I'd just like to pass on to Mr. Ngobani. As I mentioned, he is the Director of the Advancement and Alumni Relations Office. Mr. Ngobani will do the official thank you for us.
Uh thank you very much, Ronel. Um well, it's um, it's such an honour and a pleasure to, to be part of this webinar. And to be doing the vote of thanks, um especially uh because um. Well, let me say, Mr. Mfundo Shozzi and I go way back. In fact, um uh I used to teach in the Department of Public Relations Management. Uh where Mfundo uh studied and then completed both his diploma and, and, and his B T E C degree. And I do remember the time when he was a student and that unfortunate uh tragic accident happened. And we were all very concerned uh about Mfundo and we were very, we were very happy to see uh him return. And when he returned, he just returned with a, a different kind of fire, you know. He, he was just so focused on his studies and, and as he said in his uh introduction. You know, he, 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 he got many, many distinctions and he was just so driven. And so to have seen Mfundo uh grow and progress. And even when he graduated and, you know, he would tell us about his business and he would come and do free business. Um he would, he would organize with some of his colleagues in the business industry. And they'll do uh presentations at the cane growers hall here at M L Sutan. Um and so the growth that uh we have seen in, in Mfundo is really, has really been amazing. And I think it's a case now where, um you know, I was once his lecturer. Uh you know, now the, 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 the student has become the teacher. Because I've learned so much uh from, from Mfundo's uh presentation. Um and, and it's really an honour and a privilege uh to have witnessed um your growth, Mfundo. And um and, and, and we, we, we're just very, very proud uh of you. Um and, and what you've accomplished and what you will continue to accomplish and the inspiration that you are. Um so, so thank you so much, uh, 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 Mr. Shozzi for, for, for being with us this afternoon. Well, this morning, actually, um and spending and sharing your, 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 your valuable insights with us. We highly appreciate it. Uh we know that you, you, you have many things uh to be doing and, 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 and time is precious. It's of the essence. But we do appreciate um not only the time, but the valuable uh information and lessons and your story that you've shared with us. We highly appreciate it. Thank you so much and we hope that we will continue uh to engage with you further. Um as you progress and as, 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 as we, as we also take steps forward in making sure that uh we bring back our alumni. Because you are an alumnus of D U T, this is your academic home. Uh and we want to see more people like you uh engaging with the university and inspiring the next generation of entrepreneurs and leaders uh in this country of ours. Because we need motivated, inspired, young uh leaders, ethical leaders, who are going to, uh you know, take us forward as a country. So, so, so we thank you very much for, for, for what you're doing and, and for, for having spent the time with us, uh Mr. Shozzi. I'd also like to extend a, a very big thank you to, to all the participants who've, who've stayed with us and have listened. And, and we really do hope that you've learnt a lot uh from, uh, uh, from Mr. Shozzi's presentation. Um we hope that you're inspired. Um the alumni mentorship uh session. And the web, and, and the business networking sessions that we have launched as the alumni ment, uh as the alumni department. Um is really inspir, is, is, is really geared towards ensuring that we give our students um guidance, mentorship. And give them mentorship opportunities. Uh Mr. K. Molefe was asking about how do you get business mentors or coaches, et cetera. Um this is one of the platforms through which we hope that uh we can provide those linkages. Um and, and so, Mr. Molefe, there's nothing stopping you from, from approaching, or Mr. Shozzi perhaps. Uh to be, to be a business coach or a mentor, uh you know. So, so this is, this is what we are trying to achieve amongst other things. So we thank you for participating. We thank you for, for having. Uh, uh, you know, been part of this because without your, your participation and, 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 and showing up. Then um this, these sessions do not become successful. So I'd also like to extend a very special thank you to the team. Uh Ronel, uh our alumni relations coordinator, uh Mrs. Governer, uh the manager uh within the department, looking after fundraising and alumni relations. Um and also the other members of the team in the background, uh you know, who are con- contributing in various ways. Uh Onundumiso, Onumtebo, or Mr. Kamane, and No, No, No Priti. Uh thank you very much, guys, for all the work that you're doing. We're a small team, but you're doing such amazing stuff. I really uh, you know, appreciate the hard work that you put into uh making uh our department shine. And ensuring that we, we deliver the best that we can to our students and to our alumni. So thank you very much for, for all that hard work. And so with that, ladies and gentlemen, uh once again, thank you very much, Mr. Shozzi. Uh thank you very much to, to all of our participants who've attended. And yeah, we wish you a wonderful uh day further and, and all the best. And Mr. Shozzi, we look forward to uh further engagements with you as well. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Anytime.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Please don't forget to fill in the evaluation form for us. Have a good day, Father.
Where is the evaluation form again?
It is in the text box. There's a link. Um if you click on the link.
Yes, in the chat section. So if you click on the chat's uh icon, uh you'll find the link in the chat section there.
Um unfortunately, I do not have a chat section.
Oh, okay, Mr. Ngamalo. What I'll do is I'll, I'll copy this link and I'll, and I'll email it to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
We all don't have, um, uh good afternoon, colleagues. We all don't have uh access to the chat uh function.
Oh, oh, okay. Sorry about that, colleagues. Okay, um. Okay, we'll figure out a way. We'll, we'll, we'll send it via email then. Cause we've got, we've got all the participants on record. So let's, let's, let's do that, Ronel. We'll, we'll copy the link and send it to all our colleagues.
Okay, not a problem. I'll do it in the next slide.
Thank you very much. Thanks, colleagues, for attending. Take care.
Take care. Bye.
You go well.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.